All the meeting to order. September. Park and Rec meeting for Atherton. Can we get a roll call, Francesca?
Committee member Noah Eisen.
Here.
Chair Key.
Here.
Frank Merrill.
He sometimes joins late, it's okay.
Yeah, and Juliana Robertson here. Mr. Walt Robertson.
Here.
And Trish Tobin Kubal.
Here.
Okay, and. Council members not here, right?
No.
Okay. That's fine. Then we have the roll call. Are there any public comments? And then are there any instructions if someone's online and they want to make a public comment?
For anybody on Zoom, or if you're in a call, press star six to unmute yourself and you can make a comment. And I confirm I haven't received anything on email for any other public comments.
Okay. Saying none, why don't we move on to the first item of the agenda, which is a presentation from Michael Jessup at Player Capital? And if I, if I could, Francesca. We can, can we include item four as well, since that's tennis related to learn about Sonnet Clay Court? So that if anyone on the committee has questions about, you know, clay courts and tennis, we can kind of combine them together when Michael's here, so we can let him leave when it's done.
Okay.
Uh, the order is the presentations, then the approval minutes. Okay, it's okay. We'll just go, we'll, we'll, we'll get the tennis stuff done, so Michael can go, then we'll do the.
And Michael, just one more thing. I know I sent you an email asking if you had any presentations. I don't know if you're gonna have one this time, if you're just giving kind of a verbal report. But we can't see your displays are working, aren't working, so I just wanted to let you know that.
But we all have computers in front of us, so if there's a, yeah, if, if you want to send us anything, we can look at it now, but not ahead of time.
Yeah, there's not really any reports as of now. I mean, it's more of a verbal report.
Okay, why don't you just go ahead and, and give your verbal report?
Yeah, so, uh, so far at the court, we just started last week on resurfacing courts one and two, which is exciting. You know, to get that all done and all the courts looking nice. So, you know, everybody's. Excited because, you know, courts, you know, the courts one and two were much worse than the rest. So, you know, nobody wants to be stuck on those. So. You know, it's, it'll be nice once everything's done there. As far as everything else, pretty much standard, you know, people are still reserving, playing. I think during the summer, the. The usage was a little bit down, just I think a lot of people traveling this summer and stuff, but besides that. Yeah, everything's going well. That new company is, they've been doing a good, much better job as far as the trash and when there's little maintenance things, they're. Much more responsive. So on that end, at least from the tennis standpoint. They're doing a, seems like they're doing a good job. Helping out with the tennis courts, yeah.
Okay, is that the conclusion of your report?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for any questions from the committee.
Michael, could I, Walt, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
I went, I went through the contract and it talks about giving reports every month, and we talked about this before. How do we get a feel, how do we get a feel for really how many people are using it? More importantly, what time of day and day of the week? So could you tell us what kind of reports do you do?
So usually we work, Sally sends it to kind of our admin Tamra whenever Sally asks for it, then we send in our report. So. Hasn't done every month, just whenever Sally asks us for one. So basically there's a online court reservation system. That's public. You just go to sites atherton. Dot online tennis dot com. I know it's long. And then basically, when Sally asks for a report, then we go through the whole last month and just tell, say how many hours. Of public use and then how many hours were of. Like, like Player Capital lesson usage.
Can we see that report if we go to that site?
Well, there's not a report, like we, we just count it all up and then send the numbers to Sally whenever she.
That, that's what I, that's what I mean. Can we count those? Could we count those?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you could count them yourselves too. I mean, that's easy, but monotonous, but easy.
Is it? Give me the, give me the site again, if you will.
So Sally does. Well, why don't you give him the site and then I'll, I'll make my remark. Go ahead. Michael.
Yeah, it's sites, S I T E S. Dot Atherton. Dot. Online. Court reservations. With an S dot com.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the, yes.
Yeah, this, so what, the, in the, um, what is that, uh, report that comes out on the? Let me.
Park going on.
Park going on report, uh, kind of the parks events report, I believe. You'll see in that, I guess Sally puts together the tennis numbers and we have it in that packet. Um, on, it looks like page three, uh, the tennis numbers for July and August of. That it sounds like Michael's providing with total court hours and number of lessons and, and. Yeah, it's in the park goings on staff report. Each month.
Thank you.
You had a question, Julie?
Um, no, I was just clarifying. You may have said that, but Michael, the, the resurfacing is on track. As far as timing and your expectations are being.
Yeah, it's on track. Um, they just finished, um, the courts four, five and six about two weeks ago and. It's, uh, it's been holding up well, so it, there's no cracks showing through. So this, you know, more major resurface has, uh. Proven well, because in the last 10 years when we've done it. Basically after, within one week of doing the patch and paint job, the cracks are back and. And, you know, so this is great that it's, you know, it's, there's no signs of cracks anywhere. So it seems like the fix worked.
I remember, I remember Sally saying it, it will last her lifetime. So. If that, if that happens, then we're, we're good to go.
And the remaining will be finished when?
Uh, I think in four weeks.
And did court three, you said one, two, four, five, six?
Yeah, court three is a clay court.
Oh, God. They look great.
Great.
Go ahead, Noah.
Um, so I, I know we have data on key holders that are residents versus non-residents. Um, Michael, do you have data on the, the court, you know, maybe by, uh, lessons or by people? Uh, of Atherton residents versus non-residents that. Use your kind of Player Capital clinics and individual lessons?
Um, I mean, we don't have it exactly. We kind of know. Who's Atherton, it's not, we don't keep that data of if they're a Atherton resident or not, but we kind of know some, like. The ones that are, the ones that are not, and then there's a few that we might not know.
Got it. So could you give me kind of, I mean, what your general view is? Um, I think the report says, uh, well, I, I don't have the exact number of hours, but. You know, what, what is, what are the numbers that you're seeing? In that are Atherton residents using your services?
I would say probably about. Sixty percent are Atherton residents. If sixty percent's Atherton, I'd probably say thirty percent Menlo Park and ten percent everywhere else. So, I mean, Atherton and Menlo Park make up ninety percent of everybody.
Okay, so. So that would be about a hundred individual private lessons where in July would have been, you would have said to be Atherton residents.
Yeah.
Okay.
You said sixty percent? Or?
You said sixty percent.
Sixty percent, okay. Sixty percent Atherton, thirty percent Menlo Park, ten percent everywhere else. Okay, that's pretty good.
So, I'm sorry, sixty percent, and you're only talking about your lessons. You're not talking about the key holder use, I take it, Michael?
Yeah, not, not the keyhole, just the lessons.
Yeah. As you say, there's a hundred and two key holders. If we look at the, the, the information online, will we find out if those are Atherton residents or not?
Uh, well, the signup list, no, you can't find out online. You'd have to match it up to the key holder list, which, um. I think Francesca has, and then you'd have to look through and see if they're a resident or not.
Okay.
I think it would be good to actually provide, um, that data going forward on usage by Atherton residents versus non.
Do you mean the percentage of key holders or you're talking about the actual?
Key holders and Player Capital. I mean, my, my view is like, you know, I know I'm new here, but. The, the master plan of oh five was pretty specific that the, the character of the parks. Uh, and I wrote it down or copied it, make a place for the community will use and enjoy while serving the diverse needs of its residents. And I think the residence is, is really something that we need to be aware of. And so. I'd like to confirm and, and maybe it's something, Michael, that you can capture. On your registration. For, uh, so that we can, you know, continue to verify, because we have one park and I'd love to make sure that we're ensuring it's meeting the needs of the residents.
So, okay.
They have to give a address when they sign up.
Yeah, and I think that's what we have for the.
For the key holders, you pay a different price if you are Atherton or non-Atherton. So that should be pretty accessible in terms of, so we should have that data. We just.
We know.
You have it.
It's on an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
Um, but even Tamra keeps her own separate list too, so we just often like to match it up.
Okay. But we can, you know, we can.
Player Capital.
There's like three things that we want to know, residents versus non-residents, and that would be the key holders, which we have a list. The Player Capital lessons, which, um, Michael just estimated, right? Based on his knowledge and then the overall court usage through the reservation system, what percentage? Is, because we got a lot of that information because we looked at. Timing, you know, when people were using the court. So it should be a fairly easy thing to get.
And what you would like, Michael, to collect is Atherton versus non-Atherton?
I think so. For, for the Player Capital portion, because I don't think that we really know. And I just want to make sure that, that those courts are also, you know, that we're making sure that our, our residents are using. The Player Capital services, um, as much as, you know.
So it's those two specific data points you're looking for. Okay. Yeah, I think we can get that from Francesca, if she can probably email us later sometime with that. Just the key holder percentage Atherton versus non-Atherton. And then, um, Michael, I don't know if it's possible going forward to collect that information where. You keep track, um, maybe, but number, maybe not by hours, but by student?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, students like.
That are some percentage that are, do you want total or just, um, percentage that are Atherton and non-Atherton? Okay, is that, is that asking too much, Michael, or does that sound reasonable? We can get kind of the total and then a breakdown in Atherton versus non-Atherton?
Yes, I just the total in Atherton versus non-Atherton. Yeah, I think that's viewable.
Okay. Um, and then once a month, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe add it to the, to the part goings on report.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, just be part of Sally's regular, um. Data from, from Michael and then she'll put it on our goings on.
Right.
Good.
Another question, Michael, um, we haven't, yeah, the, the clay court. I know it's been, you know, I think we all agree it's been underutilized. Partly because it hasn't been maintained. So who is responsible? Or what, what is our, what's your thoughts on? Um, getting it to the point where it's a useful part of the sixth court?
Yeah. Well, after the resurface is done, we're supposed to do it, they're supposed to manicure it and see if that kind of fixes. There's just certain strips that have been. Hard where water won't penetrate. It's impermeable, you know, because so it has to be kind of dug up a little bit and then. New clay put in. So if that's done, I think it's back up to normal. The, the problem where it got really bad was, well, two, well, before COVID. There, the water pipes in the park just broke all the time. There's one year where it just broke like crazy. So then. You know, when it gets wet and then dries completely, wet, dries completely, then it hardens. And then during COVID, when, you know, the whole park was shut down for three months. You know, the water was shut off for three months. So then everything just went totally hard. So. You know, we've got it mostly up, back up. So I think one, hopefully they'll come out and, you know, redo the court a little bit, you know, it's almost like a. Resurface, but not like that extensive. And if that happens, then it should be going. I mean, like, we use it for lessons mostly, like. It hasn't had as big a hit, like a lot of the public prefers the hardcore versus the clay, but that's fine. We use it for, you know, our fourth. Teaching court most of the time anyway. So. Now, if we can get it up to, you know, after the, the resurface is done and then they kind of manicure it and hopefully that will do the trick.
And then have we bid out, are we bidding out the resurfacing or is that still in process where it hasn't been assessed yet?
Leave, I believe it's been done already, bid out. I think Sally told me it's been done already.
Okay, so it's just, uh, now, so we've, they've chosen the contractor. It's just a matter of finishing the hard court resurfacing down and the clay court guy will come in.
Yeah, exactly.
Francesca, do we know what, how much it was that the, the, um. The, the clay court vendor, is it, uh, what the price of the rehabilitation and also to what condition they? They're saying the, the clay cart will, will get, will become when, once they're finished?
Price estimate, no, unfortunately, I don't know.
Oh, you don't have that? Okay.
Information, but I can picture Sally.
We'll have that. Okay, okay. Is there, uh, for item four, is there any other information about the, um, about the courts that you want to share? Just staff report?
No, not that I have so far, except that, at least just from my end, we're gonna do our best to at least alert the key holders and anybody. So whenever somebody wants to purchase a key, I do let them know ahead of time. You, I, I don't know if that actually maybe it deters or it may have been different as far as. People wanting to buy the keys, but you know, this kind of project does make people not want to buy, um, but.
The resurfacing even has deterred a few people, okay?
And they see it too. So that's, I, I want to say maybe compared to last year or, or the years before, we've had at least maybe. Hundred and eighty or, or some keys, you know, I noticed because of how much keys I fell out and I haven't sold much this year. Um, and I think that it's just really partially due to the resurfacing.
So hopefully next year, when we're done, people will see the courses are in great condition and they'll sign up again.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it, I, I think, um, maybe for next month, it'll be good to understand more about the clay court side, because I have heard from. Some homework Palmer, Palmer tennis players that right now the clay court's unplayable. And would, I would like to know how much it'll take to rehabilitate it, how much, how likely that rehabilitation will actually work. Because I don't want to have to, I don't want the town to spend a lot of money and we find where it's not much more playable.
Yeah.
And then, um, if, if, if there's a good plan going forward, then, then that's great. If not, maybe we should think about what to do with the clay court. Now, it was just too hard to maintain, because it, it isn't that old and I'd hate to lose it, but. If people, if, if, if it, if it's not able to be rehabilitated to something that people want to play on, because we charge extra for it. Then, then it's kind of like, it's kind of wasted.
A lot of maintenance after you play on it, and I wonder whether people are actually doing it. You really have to. Roll it and do all that, and that's a hard thing to do.
Yeah, Michael's, Michael's taking care of it.
Oh, he's taking.
Yeah, he's, he's, yeah, he's taking.
Well, a lot of people, they're, they're supposed to do it, and that's one of the reasons they don't like to play on it either is. They don't want to. Most of the people are responsible and, and brush it after, but I think that also is the big thing that deters them is they don't want to go and. Brush it after and stuff.
Oh, there's, so there's additional maintenance that beyond the daily things that Michael does.
Way you have to do, you have to brush it and get the whole. Otherwise, the person has terrible time because they can't see.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's after each game.
You, you must play quite a bit.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
On, on Alex's point. We always have this issue about the clay court because somebody donated the money for this. So I think it complicates our going around saying, well, maybe we just want to eliminate the thing. So, uh, isn't that, Michael, the situation there?
Yeah, I mean, uh, so that's another. Another thing too, you know, I mean, it hasn't really panned out. So I mean, it's not the end of the world if it's taken out, but I mean, that, you know, then it's a. You know, it, it's a huge expense. I mean, it's nice to have the clay court, I think. I mean, the people that like it, love it, and then the. There's like, of all the tennis players, there are probably. Ten percent like it a lot. And, you know, they're kind of diehard love, but then everybody else doesn't like it. So. You know, and so I don't think, I think it's nice to have it there because, I mean, even if we just use it as one of our teaching courts.
Yeah, but, but. But Michael, who, who donated it and when and do we have this complication? Now, this is way before you, I, or this while you were there?
That's while I, it was an old student of mine, so they, they, you know, they've moved on and graduated. So, but, I mean, they, they put it in, so. You know, it's partly donated, but also they could use it as well and stuff. So, you know, so I mean, they're kind of done. Using it as well. So, I mean.
How long ago was it donated?
Maybe three or four years ago, was it?
Two thousand eighteen, maybe.
Oh.
So, I, I guess, did, was there, is there some sort of agreement? Um, I mean, donation is a donation, but that's a donation. I'm trying to understand, did we, did we as a town agree that it would stay in for X number of years?
If so, we had to honor that. Uh, there's no agreement. I mean, the only agreement was the town would spend, there was like a two thousand dollar a month, a year. Kind of like, kind of re-maintenance thing that the town agreed to. You know, kind of like, kind of, uh, what's it called? It's kind of re, like. Manicured a little bit, but that's, that was the only thing in the agreement.
Got it. I've just, I'm intrigued because if I look at the, the park goings on report. Over the July and August, the clay courts have been booked for fifteen hours, which is a. Uh, tiny percentage of your total hours, um, on the other five courts. I mean, it's not even close to, to one.
That's fifteen hours of, of, uh.
Booking.
Key holder use. I mean, it's been used a lot, it's been used like, like hundred hours, because we use it for lessons.
He does, I, I don't think he counts in, uh, those hours, the lesson hours.
Okay. Uh, those individual lessons?
Yeah, those are individual lessons, like the, the fifteen hours that it was reserved or reserved by key holders. You know, so compared to the other courts, the key holders reserve crazy amount compared to the clay court.
So, so you're saying about fifty hours per month, the clay court is being used for private lessons? So that is actually one, about one third, you're saying you're using it about one third, you know. Every one out of three lessons is on a clay court.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, the clay courts use quite a bit. I mean, in the afternoons, like, you know, the. So it is used by, uh, like for lessons. It's just that most of the key holders don't. Want to play on it that much.
Michael, can a key holder without reserving come onto a court and play as long as it doesn't interfere with? Your teaching or the, uh, the person who's reserved it?
Yeah. They can, you know, it's just, if they, if they don't have a reservation, though, they're gonna get bumped off. If by somebody that does.
Yeah, only bumped off if there's a, an issue. In other words, these numbers that we see here. Might be understated, if I understand it, for the hard courts as well as the clay courts.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't actually even seen the numbers, so I'm not sure. But yeah.
Oh, well. Yeah, well, what it says is.
Yeah, although.
They're all equally, I would think that it's uniformly going to be across, but the understatement's.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to capture, although, I mean, I know I did this pre-joining, but going to the courts and seeing which ones were being used. And I, I did provide that to the, the, the count, the, the committee. Previously about usage and the clay court was hardly ever being used. So. I, I think what would be good is if we somehow can. Uh, do a better job of, of really tracking usage, um, because that's really important. I, I would believe if something is being under-reported, then we've got a problem in our process. And so. Um, you know. Uh, I, you know, I, I think, I think we should be able to, Michael, if you're, uh, you should be able to provide. Uh, through that court reservation system, all the hours that you've used each individual court, because you reserve them on the system. So we should be able to say by all, you know, we, you know, you've used court one for, you know, fifteen hours too for this. So maybe we could look at, have more granular data.
Does a situation arise? Sorry, does a situation arise where the other courts are used and that's the reason the clay court is used for lessons, or is it just a choice for lessons? Um, even if the other courts are available?
Well, most people like the. The hard courts, that's usually when, that's usually the extra court that we'll use, like, but most people like to do the, the hardcore.
Right.
First, there's some, there's some, I'd say ninety percent, like, will want the hardcore if they, if they had the choice.
Yes, okay.
Michael, do you actually reserve the court yourself for what Player Capital is doing? Or is your reservation system only for key holders?
No, we reserve on there too.
Yeah, from what I understand, the Player Capital gets, uh, like two weeks ahead of time you guys can reserve and then the. Key holders get one week ahead. So is that correct, Michael? It's something like that?
Yeah, I think, well, Atherton residents get eight days in advance and then non-Atherton gets seven days.
Okay.
And is there, um, a limit on how many, anybody can reserve Player Capital or anybody else?
Yeah, the, the public can reserve one hour a day. Like one hour per key.
Okay, and what about, and what can you reserve a day?
I can reserve as much as I want.
Uh, up to four courts.
After four courts, yeah.
Up to four courts, um. Except on Saturdays, I think that might be. I can't remember. Something like, it's in the contract.
Yeah.
No, it says one extra, one extra course shifts to the public on Saturday.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, it kind of shifts on Sunday, Saturday, like before we shift, it was on, it was on Sunday. Then we, then we switched it to Saturday because there's a senior group before COVID. So I don't think it would change then the. The, what's it called, the? The contract, we kind of like, we'll just do one day or the other. Right now, we're leaving, we're only using it less on Sunday, just because that's how it was. Well, the pre-COVID, that's, there was a huge senior group that played on Sunday, so we moved it. So we ended up taking four on Saturday and only three on Sunday. And it's kind of been like that, but I mean, nobody's said anything, so that's just how it is. And, you know, if somebody, if the public wants. And we can always switch it back the other way too.
Is there more demand than court availability at this point?
Just at the high, at the high point. Like, you know, like. Uh, usually morning, weekday mornings and then after school, right now it's hot, so not really, but, uh, usually after school hours. Yeah, those are the main times.
Uh, uh, one thing, uh, I've heard some tennis key holders ask if. If Player Capital ends up not using some of the reservation time, if you guys can release those court times so that, uh, especially during the popular times, so that the key holders can use them.
Yeah, yeah, we usually, yeah, try and do that. So sometimes there's last minute cancellations, you know, just like. You know, which is unavoidable, but yeah, we usually always try to release the courts.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
About how many hours a week does Player Capital use the courts?
Hmm, I don't know, I'd have to go back and count them, count them, but like. I, I don't know, I would have to, I would see, I mean, I'd imagine. Yeah.
This says three hundred and three for July and three hundred and fifteen for August, so you can prorate that however you want, I suppose.
And that's for what, that's one, that's each one is one court hour on one court?
Yeah, one court hour on one court.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Any public comment? I should make sure we.
Well, let, let me first, I'm sorry, well, another comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Under this total, private lessons says a hundred and sixty-one individual lessons, but it says court hours for Player. court hours for player capital, three hundred and three, almost twice that. What, what does that say, Michael?
But those are clinics.
Oh, I see, the rest are clinics. Okay, hundred and sixty-one, one-on-ones and the rest are clinics.
Yeah, like two or more people.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, okay. And is, is, I know we're going through, through the resurfacing of the courts. Do you, are the numbers, in the three oh three and three fifteen, is that for you kind of continuous, you know, is it a big drop-off? Like, once the, all the courts are available, will it stay pretty steady?
Yeah, it will stay pretty steady. I mean, it might go up a little bit. Does it, the varies, when the weather is better, then it goes up. Like an obviously, and then winter it will go down, obviously it gets dark earlier and cold there. And then if it's overcast and people, there's just less, ten, when the weather is like, you know, seventy to eighty, then it drastically goes up.
Uh, any other comments or questions, uh, or from the public too? Uh, they're welcome to make them.
I just want, I just want to be clear. So the numbers we're seeing might not actually reflect, the extent of the use of the courts by uh, by key holders. Because they could walk on, come by, learn when there's not much usage, and they could go on, it's subject to being kicked off, but I, I suppose they could even see their reservations and know there's no reservation. Is that correct, Michael?
That's true.
But why would someone do that? I mean,
Well, I would if I wasn't planning ahead eight hours, uh, eight days.
Well, no, if it's not, you don't have to do it eight days ahead, it's within eight days, right? So if you want to go play tennis, you can just go on, go on the site and see if it's available today at three, for example. Before you get all, get your gear all together and then go over there. It seems like it would make more sense to find out if the court's empty than to, go over if there's no courts available.
And bring the rackets.
And bring the rackets.
That's what I said. That was my question. And on the other hand, Michael, would somebody seeing a court is vacant uh, three hours ahead, go on and reserve it? And then go over and play, or they just go online, just go to the court?
Yeah, there's some walk-ons, but I'd say majority are uh, are reservation. Let's say like, ninety, ninety-five percent are reservation. And you know, we see some stragglers that don't sign up and stuff here and there. But yeah, about, more than ninety percent are, are reserve, like, reserve.
How many hours a day are you, are you actually there?
I'm there, like, de- depends on the, but usually seven, eight hours a day.
Okay. I noticed the contract didn't require that much, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Michael, for your patience and for your hard work and keeping up the courts and giving, giving Atherton a great tennis program.
Yeah, no, thank you. It works well both ways.
Make, Michael, can you stay on? So when we get to pickleball, we might have your input.
Yeah.
A pickleball might take a little bit of time, but uh, well, we'll get there too. Um, okay, let's move on to the next agenda item, Julie's favorite. Approval of minutes. Uh, any, um, any comments of, on the minutes that people?
Those minutes were modi, tho- those drafts were modified at my request. Sally says she did it, but I didn't see that she circulated anything. So there were some minor corrections, things like that. So I'm not sure how we can, how we can approve something.
Yeah, we can make the notations and then approve as amended. So what are the changes you're asking for? Well, because I, I see it is the old copy still up there, so I, I have some changes too. And we can approve as amended, yeah.
Well, I mean, she's made them. They're on the minutes.
Oh, they are, okay.
I mean, no, I mean, not ours. They're, they're on her. She said she's redone it, so whatever's there. What I did was in presentations, item four, she wrote quality insurance document. I think it's a quality assurance document.
Okay.
Um, she put down that there were a hundred and twenty inch box trees that could be planted by, uh, a bright view. That was, from my understanding, that would be ten feet on, on a side, seemed a little big. Uh, so I don't know what she did with that one. Uh, I changed your five E comment from before. When it says you met with council members, I put down certain council members. You see, they're very sensitive to whether we're talking to all of them, we shouldn't. Uh, then I put, and I say next sentence, that you explained an existing court could have four pickleballs, took out the wrong capitalization in two, and, I mean, these are all fairly minor things that were done. And I didn't.
So maybe we should hold this off.
Then I changed, I think we ought to just wait till next time.
Okay, sure, that's fine. We can, we can improve.
Everybody could have those, yeah.
Sure, okay. Let, let us do that. So we'll table that for now. Um, and then we can, uh, any public comments before we move on? If not, let's move on to item three. Uh, Robert, it's your turn. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Okay, uh, hello, um, Park and Rec Committee, let pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks for um, inviting me. I'm going over the Art Program, the financial report. So I'm going to share.
So I, I'll just, let me introduce the item a little bit. So since we get this financial report every month, I was hoping that one, we could get, a little bit of education so we could understand it better and also kind of learn a little bit, what should we be looking at, uh, paying attention to in it. So, um, so hopefully Robert can, as the finance director of the town, he can help educate us uh, on the important points of the uh, monthly financial report.
Right, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Alex, for that. I, that was what I was gonna kind of ask the questions on that, and what to look at and what to go over. For, just to kind of go back, as we were talking about the tennis component with the um, the, the, sorry, the rehab of courts one and two in this fiscal year. The contract was approved in July of this year, our July meeting. So it was uh, approved for eighty-two thousand. And it was Saviano Group is gonna be doing the rehab on courts one and two. And um, afterwards, we will look at as.
Court three, but we don't have an estimate yet on, on the clay court rehab.
Clay court, correct, would be the remaining rehab and, 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 and working on that court. So looking at this report real quick, I just want to show for the ten, on this tennis fund, the, the budget amount was a hundred and two thousand for this fiscal year, and that includes this clay court for eighty, the, not the clay court, for the court rehabs for one and two for eighty-two thousand. And the remaining amount was either amount that we will use to help rehab the clay court and what other, other maintenance needs at the court. Um, the budget for the ten thousand is for our MCE and Brightview for, for uh,
Okay. Yeah, that's your professional services, it's ten thousand, yeah. But they're blowing the courts, things like that twice a week. And.
And so the budget total tennis expenditure program is a hundred and two thousand, hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, for this cup, this current fiscal year.
And what is that for?
Uh, the total expenditure, so a hundred and two, five hundred is for the court rehab.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, and a very basic question, what's our fiscal year?
Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
And what, what, what dates, what months are those?
July two and.
Oh, July.
July to June, July to June, thank you.
July first through June thirtieth, um, of next year is uh, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, this current fiscal.
Thank you. So for budgeting a hundred and two and the current clay court, it's current hardcore rehab, going on this year's eighty, you said, or sixty? Eighty-two, so we're expecting the clay court to be about twenty. That's what budgeting, twenty K.
Uh, for some rehab on the clay court, I think the clay court, we estimate about fifteen thousand.
Okay.
But there is a budget amount of about twenty thousand remaining for, for not just the clay court, but any other maintenance, on the other six courts, whether, you know, painting or anything. An addition. So, so that, that's what was budgeted this year, um, for the tennis. And you could see in the actual twenty-one, twenty-two, there's the current courts that we just finished, uh, courts three, four and, or four, five and six.
Hmm, four hundred sixteen, seven fifty-six, okay.
Correct. It, it, the total is about a hundred and fifteen thousand. That was for the whole contract, uh, with Saviano, the, the additional amount is just other maintenance, yeah, needs around the courts, the nets and stuff.
Okay.
So that was what that is. And so what you see for current, in, in fiscal year, uh, as of August, up to August here to date, so we've spent seven hundred and seventy-six so far. But, but the project was approved in July, so it should be moving forward in the next month or two, as far as the.
Yeah, well, we'll have probably, we'll have spent that eighty-some thousand by end of next month.
You'll see that in probably the next iteration, September, October.
Okay, cool.
Letting you know about that. Uh, moving forward, the department, park maintenance, it's department fifty-seven.
A- and before you get into that, what is the difference between park maintenance and park programs? Since I see the same line items for each, what's the distinction?
Great question. So park maintenance is the, the town's um, maintenance of the whole park. Everything to do with shrubs, trees, watering, maintenance. So that's, that's the town's um, park facility, um, basically expense. The park programs has to deal with anything that has, with our rental facilities.
Okay.
So that's the difference. So if you rent, you know, the pavilion, the main house, any expenses correlated, to events, is that part programs, department fifty-eight.
Okay.
But department fifty-seven is the town's ex, major expense on maintaining the park. So that's what, that's why you'll see, uh, so the, the, the budget is eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. It's higher than the park program expenditure of department fifty-eight, one hundred and fifty-four thousand.
So that would include uh, the bright view?
Correct. And great question, um, Mr. Robinson, uh, Robinson, sorry. Uh, the professional services, this three hundred and twenty-five thousand includes the bright view component. And MCE still also does, does a small component of the uh, assistance in the park.
Okay.
So about two hundred and fifty-three thousand of this three hundred and twenty-five is the bright view park maintenance. And then about sixty thousand is MCE, and the remaining is just about for, for park. Needs at the park, whether other contract services that we need.
And the price is significantly more than um, last year. Uh, because we're, is it because it includes these grounds too, or is it because bright view charges more because they do more?
Correct. It's, it's a bigger and all more encompassing. Yeah, a big part of it was to bring the park up to a certain standard and then the main, maintaining of that going forward.
Okay. Does it include these grounds as well, or that's what?
Right, the contract does include these grounds, but it's not in this.
But not in this budget. Okay, okay.
Um, I can see that salary, salaries and benefits are more than what could, should be standard through two months of, uh, you know, July and August of twenty twenty-two. Is there a reason, is that, is there bonus, like, why are we at forty-one percent of department fifty-eight salaries and benefits?
Great question. And I'm ready for that. So uh, we have a CalPERS unfunded liability that the town has to pay. And this is from pre-existing, previous, when we had uh, ten, twelve years ago, we had a parks department. And so we had employees that were, were at the town. And so this portion of the thirty-seven thousand, about twenty-two thousand, makes uh, twenty-five thousand, sorry, makes up this thirty-five thousand. And we pay that once a year. We paid the UAL payment at the beginning of every year in July. So we paid up for the fiscal year. So that's why you can see that higher.
Okay, so we're not off, off plan, we're just high um, actual today. No problem. Great, thank you.
A great question.
One day you'll have to educate us about the pensions.
Oh, that's the pensions and twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, that's why it's front loaded, but pensions will be a whole day's worth of education.
Correct.
Well, sorry to interrupt, Walter, go ahead.
Oh, Robert, tell us about operation and maintenance in the two different sections. If bright view's part of the three twenty-five, what's in the two oh five in uh, department fifty-seven and the same for the other?
Okay, great. Uh, so the two oh five includes facility repair and maintenance at the park. That also includes anything, uh, with all the, uh, all the facilities on the grounds, the, the, portion of the Gilmer House. So the facility repair maintenance include um, re- repairing anything at the Knox Play School. Uh, last year, we had to replace some uh, water flow switch there. There was also anything that we have to replace within the carriage house or, or, or some heating systems. Uh, last year, we replaced the HVAC unit. I think you, uh, I don't know, you all recall on that, it was about seventeen thousand dollars. So the operation and maintenance includes anything with facility repair and maintenance, custodial contract, that's the cleaning of our facilities at the park. Um, a big component of that is contract tree maintenance, which is about thirty-five thousand. Custodial contracts, about twenty-five thousand. Facility repair maintenance is around forty-five thousand. And then our utilities, which includes electricity, gas and sewer, is about twenty thousand. And then we have other contract maintenance services. About twenty thousand is, is, is a budgeted for that amount. And that's could be for anything that can come out, like beehive removal. Of other additional needs. And I, we've had quite a bit of beehives issues in the last several years.
Whoa.
Landscaping supplies as well, so that, that's all falls under this two hundred and five thousand park maintenance.
And there's more being done, I assume, this, this fiscal year. That's why it's higher than.
Correct, okay. Yeah, we just anticipate higher, higher uses. And then also with the, with the increased use, since COVID, the increased use in the park, um, has definitely picked up and we don't see it slowing down. So the costs have gone up. So um, and it's just our, our projections in, in what we've done in the last two years. And we, we just think that will be maintained going forward. And I mean, this budget amount?
On, on the, the increased use, um, I, I can, you know, we have the numbers from the tennis side, but do we have, are you saying like, kind of reservations for, you know, using the, the, you know, reserve in the house? Are just people walking through the park? How are we talking about increased usage?
More u- using the park, like for people walking through the park, more maintenance on the fields. Um, landscaping supplies, a lot of tree maintenance that we've had to do past couple of years. Um, there were some trees that we've taken out pre-summer. And so it's more of that maintenance component. Um, on the facility side, the rentals, we're starting to see the pickup ever since uh, twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. The end of two thousand twenty-one, as, as the allowed use of, of events, we're starting to see more, more use on that. Um, and prior to last summer of two thousand twenty-one, we did not have any event services. Um, uh, event manager. So we picked one up last year of, of, end of last summer of two thousand twenty-one. And so they're coming up full, to a full year of having um, the reservations and, and showing the park for, for having catered events here. And then companies are starting to pick up and having uh, events here. We just had one, a, a, a big one, I think a month or two ago, uh, at the park.
So we have, that's a, that's a great positive, that people are using the park more than even sounds like pre-COVID, a big bump up, so.
And, and we're expecting these expenses to be more back-ended because right now they're kind of not as a percent of budget, it's only at six percent and four percent. And we're kind of like seventeen percent through the year. So it'll.
It'll pick up. It's, it's cyclical. I think right now, you know, the summer months, we're getting out, school starts, we'll have some more events, some, some early fall, and then the holiday season. We haven't had anything with the holiday season. I think that'll pick up. And then again, January picks up again with, with expenditures as far as, the maintain, maintaining of key, um, and you know, and hopefully this year we'll have, we'll have some rain, maybe.
Maybe, we'll see.
Have to pick up some. Have to pick up some. Pick up the grounds more.
Is the capital outlay the circulation project, the one hundred ninety K?
Um, actually, that's the, uh, we have a hundred and twenty thousand, that's for the carriage house, uh, restroom remodel.
Wow, for a restroom remodel. Those are some nice.
We did that. Um, I think we we've gone past year and a half, I think. You you did probably discuss with Sally, the issue trying to get it bided, bid it out, and 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 so we have a feeling that. With the way construction costs have gone up.
Hmm, okay.
And and in finding uh contractors.
Okay.
The budget amount we had put in was a hundred and twenty thousand, not to say it'll be that.
Because we did the restroom remodel of the Jennings last year, yeah, and it wasn't a hundred twenty K.
No, no, it wasn't. And and I think it's just more the nature of the carriage house.
Okay.
Maintaining that field. Um, and just, it it, you know, the preservation, so I think that.
Okay.
That's why we we had budget hundred and twenty thousand. For this fiscal year, not to say that we will spend that. But uh, it's in there in in case when we we go out to bid. And then also there's about ten thousand in in this hundred ninety thousand for the painting of the Little League stands. I know the field's, it's been since two thousand fourteen when we first. Built that, when it was built by the 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 mall group. And um, so it it needs somewhere we have.
Okay.
It's about ten thousand for that, and then fifty thousand is also for some rehab of the. Park trail. I think it's uh, one of the areas, you you see it's composed, decomposed granite.
Yeah, you're gonna change more of them.
Sections, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then uh, the, none of the circulation plan is in here, it's because it's gonna be coming from outside monies, is that is that correct?
Correct, and that's in our capital improvement budget.
Okay.
The main circulation plan, but this rehab is kind of. Looking and updating areas of the park path that need to kind of get um smoothed out or 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 get a portion of decomposed granite. Like we did that one section a couple of years ago. So that's for that, this apartment. Fifty seven, fifty eight again, it's, this is the park program component, this twenty thousand is part of the. M C E for for assistance in helping in cleaning.
Hmm.
Facilities due to the park programs and, you know. Carpet cleaning and stuff like.
Yeah, so all the kind of facilities, I I think. Yeah, unless anyone has any questions, I think we kind of understand the. The cause, and I I don't see any like um. Any major numbers differing from, say, previous years, although the actual was spent was less, but we've been budgeting.
Um, correct.
About the same.
And and we answered the one about the the salaries and benefits, and it it always comes up. Around this time.
The pensions, yeah.
Because of the cowper's benefit that we pay. The U A L that we pay in Ju- in July of every year, so it's always at the beginning of fiscal year.
Um, maybe it's a question that I, for my. Understanding is, uh, I can see revenues are much below expenses, is is that? Typical um that we're running, I guess last year we had budget to, you know, one out of. Get one dollar back for every five dollars we spend, but we did a little bit better than that. Um.
That that twenty percent is actually really good for parks, like.
Yeah, okay, but that's that's the the plan is that.
Well.
And this year it should be a twenty eight percent.
I I'm not sure if we have a a true target, I just know that Hobart Palmer is just crazy high in terms of percentile of cost recovery. And it's probably because we have a. Number of facilities that can be are flexible to be used and open spaces that are flexible. Um, and uh, so it actually costs, the normal year before COVID, it was like sixty six percent. Which is unheard of in normal parks, normal parks is like maybe ten to twenty percent. So um, yeah, because most time you can't rent out anything, but we got we got actual buildings you could rent out, so um.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's actually pretty good if you think about it, I mean, you could push it more, but. One, I think from a philosophical point of view, one might ask, how much are we want to push the revenue to make money versus enjoyment of the park?
It was purely for identification, but yeah, no, it's it's great to see like the social fee numbers be as strong as we expect and, you know, to get. Groups using the park. Um, that's what we want. I think.
No, incorrect, and 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 just to piggyback on Alex's comment is, yeah, most most city parks are, their cost recovery isn't a hundred percent. Um, for us, you know, where we're at, I think a lot of it's just we're trying to ramp up on programs with with the rental programs, but a majority of. You know, uh. Our cost is just to maintain the park, so we're not gonna probably recoup that back. But a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, yeah, we were, our cost recovery was, you know, almost fifty percent, sixty percent, which is really, really good. Um, but I I think as we manage and we get the park up to to um the vision of the the master plan. And get it up up and running as as more uses is 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 becoming prevalent now. I think um, we can manage those expenses, and then we can see the revenue start to come in as we have. Increased uses. And 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 we all just changed the masterpiece schedule. Back in July.
There was a council that did it, we just had a recommendation.
And the council approved, so uh, yeah, and that's something that we always look at, as as we we see the usage of the park.
Great.
One request I have, if you could add uh, the last two years of actuals to the report, so that we can kind of see. Um, year over year, because sometimes we'll get a very odd year, something big had to be spent or something big that didn't have to be spent. So we can kind of see, okay, is this new number we're seeing um being spent, is it? You know, on par with what we have seen in typical years versus comparing to an unusual year now. Thank you, thank you, Robert.
So could I ask a question about the revenue? Um, the bottom there, the last two lines are the park administrative fee, non-resident versus resident. Uh, it shows a budget of zero, but then it shows that we're actually making money. What what what's the issue there?
Uh, great question, Mr. Robinson. Um, the. I know this this is starting in July, we did away with the um. The park admin fee being separated. A- as as a percentage is built into the fees now. However, we had already. Reservations in the previous months that were fast forward into. The fall, the winter, so they they their contract was based off of, you're gonna pay, these are the old, these are the rates at the time. And then if if it's non-resident or you're an Atherton resident, there's the admin fee charged on that. So you'll see, we'll see. A minimal amount this fiscal year, but as it's phased out, as as those reservations that occurred earlier in the year for later this calendar year. That you will, you won't see that anymore. But that's that's why.
Okay, one a one. One, one last question, the catering service fee, which I see is ten percent. Um, capped at twenty five percent, whatever that means. Um, but I, in the individual breakouts that you sent. It shows the total catering fee so far, the first two months are. Uh, are seven thousand. Dollar, nine thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars, whereas your number there is, I think, only what July was. Are we not seeing the full two month story here?
Um, the 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 report that you see, the monthly calendar report that was uh behind this. Uh, correct, we, the catering service fee. We are gonna get that seven thousand, seven thirty nine. However, the month just finished. And the contractor just needs to. Pay us that amount. So the report is just showing what we've earned, we just haven't received that second month for August.
So this is all on a cash receive basis?
On on this, 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 this report for the revenue is correct.
Yeah, because I I look at the very bottom of the report, it says print date eight twenty five twenty two, so it's not exactly the full August report. Um, it's.
Correct.
Yeah, so you might have missed.
We're just showing it snapshot of what the ma- monthly revenue report is, what we have coming. Right on the books, so that's why.
Okay.
Great question, good.
Thank you.
Um, are there any questions or comments from the public? I just want to open that up in case. Hearing none, are there any other questions or comments from the uh committee? Okay, well, thank you very much, Robert, for staying this long and and educating us, we appreciate it.
No, my pleasure, glad glad to go through it and and thanks for the great questions.
Probably. Uh, let's move on to item four. Um, uh, there wasn't much uh, anything else on there for tennis or clay cards, okay, so not much. Um, okay, let's get to pickleball, item five. So is that? That's our committee, Julie. Um, so we met with Bob Roser, one of the key holders, he gave us um, you know, some of his feedback about. Uh, you know, if we did a pickleball trial, what? He thinks that he and other uh, as he key holders would be okay with. Um, he said that splitting time um on one tennis court would be uh fine with them, so that that pickleball players would have. Say, half the day um every day. And then the other half of the day would be tennis court players. Um, so you could switch the two. Um, uh, in the day, but the preference would be that the times be consistent, so. Um, he he said, you know, tennis in the mornings and then afternoons would be for pickleball and then have that every day so that everyone knows, like, okay, if I want to play. Tennis, there's an extra court available, if I want to play pickleball, there's a, there's court available in the afternoon. Um, and people don't have to think about which day it is, things like that. Um.
Which tends to be the way that it is at other.
At, oh, okay, when they should, when they share a court, but uh, with tennis.
They designate a period of time and like at Redd and Wharton, you know, it's. Eight AM to twelve.
So.
And those hours are, you know, pick up pickleball and people come and use the the tennis courts that have, that are dual use, you know, for that period of time.
That that may be what Bob Roser thinks, that don't we have essentially a contract with key holders? That says that at any time, they may reserve. As much as eight days ahead and anytime thereafter. To have full use of the two courts at any time. Isn't that basic what the key holder? Deal is?
I don't know if we have a formal contract. Uh, Francesca, is there a formal contract we have with key holders?
Um.
I I I'm not talking about necessarily a written contract, I'm talking about a contract that exists. When they pay whatever it is, several hundred dollars. And isn't, don't they doing that on the basis that the town has represented? That they may get on that court using that key. And that is two courts. Uh, that at any time.
Uh, I think we give them the right to have a key to a set of courts, and those courts. Um. Are available at certain time, could be available at certain times for a different kind of court use, which could be pickleball too. Um, I'm not sure. Well, uh, you know, I I'm not sure people would get that legal into it that. Um, but if they felt dissatisfied, well, I don't want to get too far into this until we. You know, do some more investigation and in terms of what maybe what others want to want to do in terms of setting up a a temporary pickleball trial. But this is just, you're right, this is just Bob's idea.
Yeah, that would have to be modified.
Yeah, well, we can, I I think we're, we as this pickleball subcommittee are open to modifying it. Um, the proposal, and of course it'll go to council too, and we we will collect feedback along the way and find something that works. For um, for everyone as best as we can. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying to find good use for the courts, and if the committee says, hey, we want to have a pickleball option. Um, you know, we'll uh, we'll we'll consider having that and proposing that to the council, so that's. W- w- let's see what what what, you know, the feedback we get as we continue this. I know we're gonna meet with uh Michael sometime. Uh, and talk to him about how we can have uh, say, this pickleball trial coexist with. Uh, tennis, uh, it it may not affect Michael as directly with player capital, because he'll get his, he already has his reserved tennis courts that he has. Um. That he can use, and then, uh, but we want to work with them to make sure that we we keep everyone happy as best we can and and make sure it's successful.
Well, we've got, we've got Michael on the line, let's ask Michael, wh- what do you think about taking twenty five percent? Away from the, if my my numbers are right, twenty five percent of the time away from the key holders?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, I mean, there's no real real way to tell, but I think they'd probably not be happy. I mean. I I can imagine, I mean, the the usage is very uh. It fluctuates, so when people want to play, for some reason, it feels like everybody wants to play at the same time. And then, when they don't, then, you know, there's courts open and empty, so it's it's very. You know, but then, you know, people are like, for some reason. You know, when they all want to play and it's like, wait, there's only one court, they're gonna prob- I'm guessing they'll be upset. You know, there's no way to tell, maybe they're pickleball players, who know? Who knows, so. Um. Yeah, there's no real wa- way to tell, I mean. Just from the standpoint of um. Not even access, I mean, just the noise is a little bit annoying, I mean, it'll definitely be annoying when you're out there all days, or just the people playing next to, I mean, that's probably the biggest. Um. Issue. Is probably the the noise. You know, and that's that 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 one. You know.
Yeah, the the trial is, uh, the purpose of the trials to help understand what the noise level is. And possible ways to mitigate it, it's not going to be permanent, so that's why we're thinking of having a trial first. And.
Now I had a question, how far are the pickleball courts from Felton Gables? Well, they would be on the top, they would be, how far is it?
It it's um, I can tell you, it's.
It's a hundred. Zero to two courts away, depending on where we put the.
Okay, I I've done a lot of looking to pickleball.
It's a hundred and eighty feet.
Okay, on the sound, and it looks to me like the sound under three hundred feet, there's been an enormous number of complaints by homeowners. And lawsuits in different communities, so I think the town needs to get the decision, not only just on Hobart Palmer, but on pickleball generally, because the noise. They actually know the noise, it actually violates the noise ordinance, it's over sixty decibels. Um, so you have to deal with the fact that. That, you know, tennis court and it's not only decibel level, but it's also the nature of the sound. Um, so that, I I would think something that we should look at, I'm happy to. The noise is definitely a huge issue, it's come up numerous times, and it's definitely, as Alex said, it's definitely something that's going to be evaluated with the trial, because we know that. Even when the tennis courts were put in, and certainly with the baseball, you know, field. There were, you know.
Uh, Noah.
And it's not gonna be permanent, uh, pickleball courts, we're just doing the trial. If it turns out to be successful. And we can get funding, we could put permanent pickleball courts somewhere else.
I see, so, so at this point, what, how is the pickleball being, is it on the subcommittee or the whole committee looking at it, what's going on?
Uh, the subcommittee is looking at it, and then we're just reporting to the committee right now.
And who's the subcommittee?
Uh, it's Julie, me, and it was um.
Taylor Henkel.
Taylor, yeah, Taylor.
I'd be happy to take his place.
We, when we get.
Well, I I don't think, I don't think we can, can we, under the Brown Act, don't we only have five members now?
No, we have seven, so.
Oh, we do, okay.
Well, it, the Brown Act is by the size of the committee when it's full, because you. If you only have um. You, but you have to have a majority meet, so, but as long as it's not a major, well, I don't want to be a lawyer here, but from my understanding, as explained to me. Uh, as long as you have. Um, a a majority of the potential size of the committee, less than a majority of the potential size of the committee not meet. Uh, or meeting, then you're not violating the the Brown Act.
I'm a lawyer, yeah.
No, no, I I've missed, I've missed something somewhere. Who who are the last two members? The only people I saw mentioned was Noah as a new member, who else is a new member?
I'm a new member.
I I'm sorry, only one person speak, please, who is that?
Uh, this is Trish Kubal, I'm a new member on a four-year term.
Okay. Okay, great. So doesn't that get us to six?
Six.
What am I missing, Alex?
No, that's it, we have six, but you you go by the seven that the committee is sized for.
Are you sure?
Yes, because I've I've.
Okay.
Because I've I've been on committees where things have been reduced, and it's not a Brown Act violation to have. A majority of the remaining people left, otherwise sometimes you might have trouble just have two people interacting with each other. Because you're gonna be down to three, and and two people can't even talk to each other. Um, although, you know, it might be a hold in the Brown Act, but but that's that's for the legislature to to figure out if if they want to close that that loophole.
Okay, Anthony, Anthony, are you on the phone? Are you on the call?
No, it's actually, I'm logged in.
See a picture of Anthony.
Yeah, because he's the one that started the meeting, at least the link, and so the only way that I can start it is by accessing through his.
Okay. So I I regard him, I regard him as able to answer the question, that's why I asked.
Yeah, when when we formed the subcommittee, it was always three people, and we didn't go to four, because that would have been a majority, so. Um. So we can, we can keep it at three, um, that's all I'm saying, when we get around to the uh next point, we can uh talk about that.
Okay, great, now I didn't realize we had six, so that makes, so we have three out of six.
Yeah. But you could, you could still, well, anyways, okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, so that was the feedback we've gotten, so. Uh, Julie and I and or the pickleball subcommittee was planning to meet with um, Michael next, uh, Taylor was trying to. Taylor was trying to set up that meeting and I know Michael got a few emails from him, but Taylor has picked, gone to a new job. So he's moving out of Atherton and so he had to resign from the committee, but we'll, we'll pick that up again with Michael soon after this meeting. Let's see. Some other things that, that I've, I've learned from, say, Sally, I've asked her if she could get some information from Saviano, who is doing the court reservicing of the tennis courts about how much it costs for building a new pickleball court. And they were estimating it's about 40 to 50K constructing a new, although depends on site preparation too. So sometimes the site preparation costs more, but they're, they say about 40, 50K. And the cost for conversion from a tennis court to a pickleball court is about eight K, although they didn't specify that was that per tennis court or per pickleball court.
That, that, I'm pretty sure that is for converting a tennis court to three or four pickleball courts. Because Menlo Park has also gone through that process and has a little bit lower than that number for their conversions, but yes.
Okay, so thank you.
Noah, could I ask, could I ask you a question on that? I went and looked at Menlo Park and they were still playing on a tennis court. And they've done the, what we all know that can be done, which is four courts for pickleball running horizontally on the tennis court. Are you saying that they've done something more permanent than that?
No, that was, their cost originally was $2,300 to do that. And I, I think they looked into additional court and for whatever reason, the number was a little bit higher. It wasn't 8,000, but it wasn't 2,300 either. I don't know if they're looking to put in more permanent, like some netting. I don't know, but, but that's about. Maybe there were higher quality nets they were looking at. I'm not sure, but that, that's the ballpark. If you're just trying to dual stripe, dual stripe lines, tennis, and to make it a shared tennis and pickleball court usage.
So you say it might cost us $8,000 just to put removable stripes on a tennis court?
Striping and nets and different nets.
Striping and nets. I, we should, I'd love to see the, this Saviano quote, but, but it would also, it should be, while I would, I would guess it to be somewhere between three and $6,000. Depending on the quality of the net, we could go from, as I, I've, I own a net like, you know, you can get a hundred dollar net and you can get a $2,000 net.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we don't have to build the, the pickleball courts today, but I, I, the purpose of me getting numbers was just to get the ballpark.
Great.
Yeah, so that everyone kind of has an idea. Okay, what if we did the permanent? How much would we need to raise? And if we did just a conversion, how much would it cost? That's all.
Yeah, I, I just had another question. There's quite a few pickleball courts in the community and there's issues about noise and everything else. If we're going to look at doing a pickleball court at Hobart Palmer and do the research on pickleball, I would think it would make sense for the town to develop an approach to pickleball more broadly, since we're going to have the same information. Because they're going up and they are, the sound, you know, the distance from neighbors and all that sort of stuff. It would be nice. I'd just like to put that on the agenda, something that we should take. We shouldn't, if we're going to do all this research, for one, I think we ought to use it for the benefit of the whole town and I'm happy to work on that.
Okay. I think, I think we'll have a solution in the next, the next item to discuss.
Oh, good, good.
At least for the, the subcommittee.
Excellent.
Walt, did you have any other comments? I know you had some comments for me. You sent me by email, but is there anything else you wanted to, to say or? Because I, I think we're going to move on to the next item.
I didn't send you any comments by email on this agenda item, but.
Okay, no, no, you had some comments about, about two months ago about pickleball that you said.
Right.
I forget what exactly what it was, but you, you might bring it up now, but maybe you already said.
Right. Well, no, there's, there's lots, lots of issues I see. In fact, very appropriate to the noise issue is I do know a little about pickleball. I know there are some noise suppressing paddles now, which I wonder if Noah thinks, or any of you that play pickleball.
I bought, I bought two.
If we mandated, if we mandated those, would that limit the people that would be playing? And, and we can buy them ourselves and have them available at the library or something.
I, I actually bought two of the low noise paddles. There's a whole list that's designated by different communities that have huge, you know, pickleball, like Sun City in Arizona. And these two paddles were listed as low noise. But when I was at Red Morton and we tried them out with the other people there, there wasn't really a big difference. So, and that's a whole nother detail to all of this that we'll have to dig into, but you know, we're getting ahead of ourselves with the paddles, but the noise obviously is part of the test to determine demand, determine how it affects neighbors, to determine how we coexist with tennis, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, if we've got a violation of a noise ordinance, that's, that's a big deal, it seems to me. So that's why I ask about it.
Sure.
Trish, you have another comment?
No, no, I'm, no.
You're good.
I'm good.
Okay. Why don't we move on to the next item? And all I have to say is maybe we should rather work on the housing plan instead of pickleball. This, that seems, that seems easier. I think everyone in Atherton is in unison about what should be done with the housing. Okay, so park projects, goals and discussion. So we went over the pickleball item, but with Taylor leaving, we have to, we can reconstitute it and have people join or leave. But I sense that I have two members that want to join the pickleball subcommittee. Am I correct? Trish and Noah? Okay, I am happy to resign the subcommittee and let you to join. And that would be a membership of three. And that's, that would be within the bounds of the Brown Act as I understand it.
It is.
Okay. Okay. We'll have that. Francesca will record that and you guys. Francesca, can you send an email to all of them so that everyone knows how to contact each other and then you guys can continue on? I'll, I actually, I can't send you, you guys a note anymore, but we're, we're, we've left off in our planning. But, but Julie has a lot of that information, so she knows how to contact Michael. So I think you guys are in good hands with Julie. Anything else about pickleball from the committee? If not, we'll move on to the other two items. Walt?
Do we need to, is there any community input or for, for that topic? Do we have to ask for community?
Oh, if there's any public comment, I can ask. Is there any public, right now, I think there's only Michael on the line. Actually, Michael's not even on the line anymore. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. And why don't I just say, is there any public comment on this item? With the cover the whole thing. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. The other two prioritized projects and for you two who are new, we, what we try to do every fiscal year is pick just a handful of projects focused on that says we want to be able to finish this goal by the end of the fiscal year. And the three we picked this year were decide on what to do about pickleball, whether it be trial or whatnot. The circulation plan, making sure that we got that construction started because it's been on our list of things to do for the last two years and I don't think we've started it. The circulation plan. So there's, there's been a grant from Stanford by a Santa Clara County. It's a long history about how, how it came about that way to improve recreation in the community. Atherton got that grant and I think it's about a million dollars, is it? Something like that. And the decision of what to spend it on was to improve the front area of Hobart Palmer. And there's a, there's a plan called the circulation plan in which they'll redo the paths, they'll redo the plantings, basically fix up the entire area for a million dollars and and it's been two years of planning. So we want to actually see it constructed. So that's why we made it a priority. And I have nothing to report there. I don't know, Francesca, if Sally had anything for that. No. And then the third item is, let me open this up.
Brightview.
Brightview, yeah, because Brightview is a new contractor doing a lot of the landscaping. We wanted to keep an eye on what they're doing and making suggestions, things like that. I think Walt is leading that committee. Walt, is there anything to report on the landscaping item? Walter? Oh, okay.
Sorry, Alex. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's anything about this. But what I am going to suggest is when we get to the calendar, that we have Brightview report twice a year, not just once. So anyway, that's what I would do. The other thing, of course, we've been concerned about taking forever to even get a plan for how we're going to use the million dollars. We got all kinds of drawings. But the, the person who's drawing up the plans somehow gets to 90% and we just hear that over and over again. So I think the city's not really getting, the town's not getting really its money for this one in any quick basis. We'd hope to have this construction going, but now we still don't even have bids out.
Yeah, that's, that's true. We, we heard that at the last meeting was at 90%. It's been two months since then. So.
Right.
Yeah. So I'll follow up with Sally on that, ask her about that.
Well, I can do that if you want somebody else to have responsibility. I'd be happy to do it.
No, I mean, well, I, I mean, you're, I mean, you have the item for the landscaping. I'm fine with taking the circulation kind of heading that.
Okay.
We've got
Okay.
three other members doing the pickleball, so it's about an even distribution.
Who, who is drawing up the plan?
I forget the contractor's name. It's been a while.
Okay.
I'm sure we know, but it's a vendor.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
And, yeah, we, I mean, the, I mean, to our, I mean, for our level of understanding, unless you are kind of a landscape architect or architect, you, it'd be kind of hard to understand like the deep level detail they're going to and the, the, just the proposal side, I think is enough for people to kind of envision what it is, I think. Just for a layperson, but that, that Sally will probably share with us maybe next meeting, so.
Sure.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item, which is committee reports, the foundation report. Are you providing it this month, Walter?
I will, given by other members or not here or a member. So the, just so the new members know that I've been a part of the foundation board of directors for probably 20 years or more. And I've also served as their legal counsel when I was practicing law. So we meet every month and sometimes it's before Park and Rec, sometimes it's after. We did meet a few days after in July. We took August off. So our main role, of course, is to try to get improvements to the park by raising money and then deciding on projects. The last project was the area that you will see called the Event Garden, which is between the house and just to the west of the house. And, and so we financed that all ourselves. We actually did it all ourselves. The town commented that we could have a better choice, a wider choice of people to do the job at a less expense if we weren't hampered by the requirements of the town for the kind of labor that they can hire. So what we're trying to do now is obviously keep in touch with the park. We give a lot of input to various sources, including this committee. So anyway, when we met, actually, the most interesting things that were to the foundation were pickleball, as you might expect, and circulation plan because they tie with our goal, which is to get better, as much use of the park as we can. And also to try to rectify a little bit the poor maintenance in our view that actually damaged what we spent thousands of dollars on, tens of thousands on the event garden. So we're, we're interested in all, actually all the priorities here. But we met, we talked about that. We do have Bill Widmer as our council representative. And so he explains what's kind of generally what the council's doing. But there was not any action taken particularly at the last meeting. But we do want to, I think the thrust of the board was we'd like to be sure that we're up to speed on what's done with the pickleball and with the maintenance of the, of the park.
Is, is the foundation in favor of pickleball? Is that what they, they moved?
Well, they didn't move, but the foundation discussed the various aspects. And actually, Michael's a member of that board. We heard basically the same stuff that you're hearing as well. So I think, I think the thrust of it was that people wanted to make sure it was proceeded carefully, didn't violate any of Michael's rights, which he does have under the contract, and that we be sensitive to the, the key members, members of the, that hold keys as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Walt. Are there any questions or comments in the foundation report? If not, let's move on to the park and activities and project updates. Francesca?
Well, Sally didn't actually provide me more of an update on that. I was actually, when I reviewed it, it looked almost the same as the park projects and goals discussion, but yeah, I actually don't have any updates, at least just for the active portion on that part.
Okay.
Well, you can see it's very helpful what you did send out or was sent out to us. We get a, a day by day usage report of what's coming up in September. And going back to original point, we have as many as a hundred people coming for a wedding reception as well as almost a daily, well, let's say four or five times a week, usage of some aspect of the park. Hopefully with some payment.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I mean, I, I do see that when we, I mean, I know that Robert was reviewing some of the revenue and everything like that, but as far as interest wise goes, it's more of me and Cassidy working on it and we get a lot of inquiries. You know, I think that because, you know, it's not to say that the park or at least just our procedures is supposed to be more strict on the people. We want people who are coming into the park to feel welcome, but they have a really high expectation when it comes to having their events in Atherton. They want to be able to do the grand, big portions of it. But they don't understand as far as how we try to maintain at least the charm of the park and, you know, just like what Robert was saying, all the work that it takes just to keep it the way that it is. And so we try to balance it out. You know, having to introduce also catered to as kind of like a benefit, if that's, you know, that's really what pulls people in because it's like your one stop shop. So if you notice on, at least just for the, the other report where we, I, I think there was like about 33,000 that Cater Two was able to make for just August and just catering fees.
Yeah.
And so that was a big one. And if we look in September, we're looking at that and it's not noted here, but I just wanted to also mention that I think towards September 28 and 29. And if you were to see for October, that's rented out for three days straight.
Wow.
Yeah, so somebody rented it out. And so now with the new fees, the hourly is what actually helps us because now we can appropriate the fees and what they can do. And so that's.
Does that mean more revenue or that means it's okay?
It does mean more revenue.
Okay.
And what's good about this is that I believe Cater Two is actually catering this event in particular. And just to add on to that, the contract holder is a resident.
Oh, okay. So they get a discount.
Yeah, they do. We have a lot of them. I want to say that the clients that are like part of their foundation board. Sometimes the nonprofits, they're the directors and they like to offer that, you know. You know, that's, that's really the real kind of winner there. And, and I want to say that the difference between that now that we took away the administration fee, we can keep track of that still just because of the actual fee, but I do put that in a report and then maybe I can ask Robert to see which residents are actually reserving it. I do see an increase of Atherton residents using it.
That's good. That's good. And the, and in terms of the amount of reservations and use, it's, is it, has it changed? Or it's just about the same and the mix has changed to more Atherton residents?
This is just what I observed. I do see a lot of more companies using it. That's why our social fees have increased.
Okay.
And so the reason why they use it is because Cater Two caters very events. And so they have that, you know, like that freedom and that, that convenience of being able to go to Atherton with this service. Not to say that other weddings and other events don't benefit from it, but it's, it's based on someone's budget. That's why the social fees are a lot more higher.
Yeah, okay.
Do we guarantee, is there any problem with when we rent it out and there are other things, whether it be soccer or Little League or what, what's, how do we establish what boundaries we can and can't do? Like the, 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 the person that's making the reservation? How do we establish what boundaries we can and can't do, like the, 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 the person that's making the reservation has. On certain areas of the park?
We do have a rule that we don't double book, so this is where. Me and Cassidy actually see how we can work with the clients, you know, it isn't necessarily fair to say that. Oh, this person wants to get the pavilion, and then somebody wants to do the main house, and you know, they're relatively close to each other, so having two events. Together at the same time, you know, we let them know ahead of time, that, you know, there's gonna be an event here, maybe we can adjust the timeframe. We've done it where the transitions weren't really smooth with each other, so as one event is cleaning up on the other side of the park. The other one is starting to set up. You know, the whole point, and at least the goal of that is because we emphasize to them that parking can be an issue. And so, not to say that they can't park there, maybe they wanna reduce the amount of guests. So we really work with them and, and see how we can still have their event, because, you know, almost. Maybe eight, 10 out of the time, it's that they find venues at least around in the area, it's not affordable. And so me and Sally have actually talked about these fees, and it, it really is affordable compared to any other kind of venue facility.
For residents or non-residents, or both?
For both.
Even for non-resident, cause we, cause the prices were raised for non-residents.
What is the barrel delta between resident and non-resident?
Can't remember, but it's, well, it is. I have a spreadsheet, I can share with you. And I should know this, cause I, well, I developed a lot of it, but. But the council changed it because they wanted to favor residents more. And, and that's, that's, that's definitely a thing I thought was very smart of them to do.
That's good to hear that you've been hearing from people, cause I see things aligned and talking to people that they feel like. I've word of mouth, I have nothing to quantify this, but some people have said that the facilities here, they think are expensive. So it's good to hear that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and you know, the, the venue itself is, I mean, I guess it, you would consider it pricey, but it's really our rules and how we do. Client care, that's what keeps them kind of engaged and what's interested, because overall, you're still trying to sell the venue. You know, it isn't just to say that, like, yes, you're renting into a park, but then they also know that it is a park that, you know, they. The way that we help maintain, and I know that at least Cassidy does her best to make sure that we provide at least the best service, and that. Connects together with the catering services. That's really what it is.
Managing expectations too, like you said. I hate to ask this, but do you? Just for clarification, has, have there been any recent complaints after an event from anybody?
No, no, and I, and I really say that in all honesty. Just because Cater Two has kind of done the best with their client care, usually before, I don't know. Oh, you weren't here before with a previous catering service?
Part of the time.
In a catering by Dana?
Yeah, we had a few issues with them.
Was it like noise or just cleanliness?
Just more of management. Yeah, it was more of a management, we weren't very much involved with their catering services, we weren't very open about it, we just kind of. Let them do what they do on top of the fact that they took the percentage, so. It was really a good deal having to work with Cater Two. And because they've been so open and kind of transparent on their operations, and because, you know, they can't, they can't hide it, we take about 10% of it, so. We kind of expect just the all around service because it benefits all of us.
Just back to my original, the, like, if someone rents the main house, are. Are we saying that, I, I'm not sure if it's Menlo Park, Little League, or whoever can't use the. Little League baseball diamond, or do we, how, how, like, I'm just trying to understand, I know the public can go into the park and walk around. But there's areas that would be sectioned off, but the, are we? Do we segregate kind of hours where Little League can use it, okay?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't outwardly segregate, or it could be the same for people who use tennis. You know, we will tell them what time they can or cannot go, but if you're gonna use the Little League, of course they can. They, they have the timeframe, I think their contract is that. They can use the core, or the baseball field, I think sometime between April and through the summer. And then through some game days, but other times. I, I wanna say maybe 60% of the year, it's free.
To clarify, you're, so you're asking, like, if there's something going on in the Event Garden, there could still be kids on the playground. Private event, but yeah, there still can be things going on.
What I was saying, it's me, and when you come here and you wanna have your wedding, you have to also still recognize, this is a park.
Beautiful, great.
And we've never had an issue. I think there was one time where it's just. Bigger companies and they like to do their food trucks, and a lot of the park visitors think that it's for them.
Well, as the chair of the committee, I have to go and make sure they're serving the food, they're doing a good job, right?
Yeah, that's probably just one of their biggest things, I think that when I used to actually do the, when I did the events, there was one where they wanted a horse drawn carriage. And I thought, oh my god.
But we have a horse facility in the park, the Carriage House.
Like, no, that's, that's not how it is, but. They made it work, and I think you have to recognize, we're not doing traffic control, they're like, how can I do it, and it worked out really well.
Okay, I think that's good.
Great, thank you.
I thought National Night Out was really well done, it's, it's, it's actually getting. It's too popular, maybe. Maybe in the future, we could have something for the bigger kids to do, cause they, they like to. Roughhouse on the, on the bounce houses with the little kids, and, yeah, that's, can be a little scary sometimes, but. If, if we find them some way to get their energy out on some, some bigger apparatus, maybe that would be fun, but yeah, it's definitely very popular. And a lot of people are coming, but that's, that's a good thing, I think.
I think we usually budget, at least for food, even though it's been donated by Inner West. We can't always assume that it's, it's gonna be donated next year, we hope so. Or whoever wants to do it. Well, we sold out on food.
Oh, we did, we actually ran out of food, wow, okay, we never had that before, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's not to say that people didn't get their third.
Well, maybe we should give everyone a ticket to make sure that they don't come back, or they can only get one, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but.
Yeah, I think, I think, I don't know who told me, I think it was George, that he estimated around over 600 people.
That's good. Okay, any other questions on this item? Now, let's move on to the park events report.
I guess I touched in a little bit on the park events, did you have any questions about the park events, or?
Although, actually, something that Walter had brought up, he wanted to see if we can get the Brightview in two times a year, so. That's kind of on the calendar item. Walter, do you have a proposal for, right now, they're on, gonna be in June, so did you want that like six months away? So, in December, something like that?
Be a good idea, yeah. Since they're, since they're new, they're new, and they just had plans before, so it'd be nice to have them.
You're just in time for the last item, I think. Get to it, member comments, do we, any, any member comments from the committee? And this can also include future agenda topics you want to propose.
Also on the calendar, have we, have we completed that or not?
Yes, go, go ahead, Walter, besides December.
I, I would, I would say we ought to have Cassidy report as well.
She's on the schedule for, let's see, she's definitely on here somewhere, I just can't remember where.
I see December park event staff update.
So they'll, they'll be both reporting on the same, same time, yeah.
Okay, so we could add those, the one to that one, I guess.
So, any comments from the committee for item D or future agenda topics?
I think the only thing I would say is, is just that we, I think it'll be handled in the subcommittee, but just that we look at a broader town initiative about pickleball. Because there's so many courts going up, and I know people, I've just heard word of mouth, some people don't like it, and so, you know, it's just having regulations, so people say. If I'm gonna build where it has to be in this location or whatever. So, but I think that's gonna come out of the pickleball committee, but just as a tickler.
So, pickleball, well, the, the, these items, the, the top three. Focus items will be on the agenda every, every month, so we'll definitely have the chance to talk about pickleball.
I'm talking about, is this pickleball as, as, as in the park or pickleball period in town?
Pickleball in the park.
I'm saying pickleball, I'm saying if. Well, it will come up every month, good.
It might be hard to talk about, say, pickleball and a private residence, I don't think, where we, is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, I just don't know what the, that's what I was gonna ask, and maybe this is a good time to clarify, I was just gonna ask you after the meeting, when you say overall, and this is kind of the only. Unless we're missing something, other than private residences, other than Holbrook Palmer, where would there be?
Service club?
Yeah, they could probably put, as long as they don't violate the noise ordinance, they probably could put one in.
Yeah, no, they have, they, they have a noise ordinance problem, though.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, but we'll.
But that's, that's, that's a private. On a private facility, it's not.
The, the town, the town council would have jurisdiction where that, our, our, we're park only, so. Unless, unless the council decides to say, give us that. The, one thing I would ask, if we could add to next month's agenda, is a circulation plan report from, from staff. Cause everyone wonders, 90%, are we at 95, 96, 99.9? We, we wanna get to 100, so. Thank you, thank you, Francesca. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Done, thanks, everyone, we will see you all next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.